Welcome, everyone, to our work session today. I -- we're here to have an update on our housing strategy, and I will turn it over to our city manager, Scott Sanders, to introduce it.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Thanks for joining us this morning. This is our second update with the work that's being done on housing strategy. We've got a committee hard at work. We've got a couple consultants helping us out you're familiar with. And what we need is -- we'll have this presentation this morning and get some input from council so we can dive further into the details that would reflect the preference of the council. So I'll go ahead and have Charles come on up. Appreciate the work that he and his group are doing.
Scott, is there anything else you wanted to say? Or do you want me to just jump in? Good morning, everyone. What's that? All right, let's see. Well, thank you for having me back, Mayor, Council. I've got maybe two dozen slides. Some of these are refreshers, some are new, some are also as refreshers, an opportunity to go over ground we've already covered, established, worked through. Of course, if there's any questions, please just stop me at any moment, and I'll do my best to answer them. In terms of ground already established, you may recall that we had worked through at our last session, maybe a month ago, the notion of a significant market gap that you've got, which presents some challenges to the city's budget at a structural level, and that coexists alongside of an affordability gap for quite a few low-income households. So these are two challenges. We view them and recommend that you view them on equal footing with equal priority, with, you know, equal determination to address. The second thing, which we'll come to at the end of the slides, is in the process of strategy development, really sort of working from this altitude to this altitude to this altitude, and we're at a point where your consultant, in this case, can get you, let's say, to the five -- sorry for the -- if there's any Chiefs fans, can get you to the five-yard line, but in order to get you in there, to really, you know, get across the line, quite a bit of very fine-grained financial analysis will be necessary. And so some clear direction from council, I think, is really appropriate at this stage. With that, let's see if I can walk through these slides. And full disclosure, I'm not an Eagles fan. I just happened to pick one of the two to mention, so. All right, so I'll go through findings, just to be sure that, you know, what -- that I do a good job of conveying what it is we saw in the numbers, how we think the numbers establish a current situation, you know, the baseline conditions you've got, then a pivot to looking ahead, what we think your options are, and then our recommendation for how to proceed. So, as I said last time, to point I think is really important to underscore, and that is that the market is generally healthy. There's no sky is falling issue, so it's critical, we think, to see in the data that multiple truths exist at the same time. One is it is generally healthy, and it is at the same time quite vulnerable, right? So being vulnerable doesn't make it unhealthy. Being, you know, healthy doesn't make it invulnerable. But these are two things that I think you want to consider. And so how do we know it's generally healthy? It's not an expensive market. It provides a good return to owners ahead of inflation in a number of neighborhoods, and against the suburbs, you're doing better and better, right? So you've clawed back. It's indicative of a number of efforts over the decades that have paid off, right? And so there's a lot that's going quite well. Nonetheless, you may recall, we had found, really looking carefully at the stocks, that close to 45,000 small, single-family homes actually are woven into your market in some difficult and problematic ways. They provide, at once, two things to keep in mind. They are -- they tend to be older, they tend to be smaller, they tend to be hard to market, they tend to spin off a nominal amount of revenue, net revenue, to the city, and as a consequence, you know, that becomes a bit of a -- more than a bit of a challenge structurally. At the same time, precisely because they're hard to market, demand is low, prices are low, affordability is high, and so they are an important and sizable stock of naturally-occurring affordable housing. So both of these, you know, just I want to underscore that these sit and require attention on both sides.
How many are rentals?
It's actually to a lower percentage than I thought, but it also depends almost block by block. So I think overall, about 65% to 68% would be owner-occupied, right? But depending on which block, you could be on Ovid, is it Ovid or Ovid? Ovid, you could be on Ovid, you know, and just two blocks here, two blocks there, you can shoot up and find a block. For instance, it's at 80% homeownership, and just a few blocks in the other direction, you know, suddenly you'll find yourself at 52%, 53%, 55%. So it depends. However, that said, the trends are all going in a lower homeownership rate. And so while I think the balance of 65 to 70 is a good, healthy balance, it's not going to stay that way. It's going to be 65 to 60 to 55 in the course of time, for a number of reasons. So staying with findings, first, on the market gap side, a key piece here is that you've got about 12,000 fewer households with incomes of $100,000 or more than what that ends up -- than you would have if you were at par with the suburban competition, okay? And so what that does is it means that there's less purchasing power in the city housing market than there is in your suburban counterparts, and consequently, your values are at about 60% of your competition, okay? So that becomes something that we think, as I said before, is structural and requires some attention as you develop housing policy for the city. At the same time, you have about 10,000 more households with incomes less than $50,000 a year, and this itself, you know, is the demand side of that supply issue that we outlined at the outset, okay? So these are two things that we talked about last time. Important to go through both of equal weight. So where does that leave you at the current situation? As we see it, working through your current policies, your spending, you are actually writing very big checks to do a lot of work on both sides of the equation, right? So depending on how you count up your resources, you're putting about $60 million a year, exclusive of TIF financing, out the door to address these two issues. About 36 of this comes from state and federal government, and additional five from Polk County, along with sales tax, your CIP, and then the housing portion of your abatement. That brings you to about $60 million a year. So that's a lot of money, okay? Now, of that, you're directing some of that to address affordability issues and some of that to address market issues. As I mentioned last time, while 59 plus the 5, the $64 million a year is a significant amount of money, we estimate that, on balance, it really ends up resolving something less than 10% of the problem you've got, the problems you've got. So it's a lot of money, but it is a considerably insignificant number relative to the set of challenges out there. It doesn't mean you don't have big successes. On the market gap side of the equation, TIF multifamily is really something to celebrate. It's thoughtful, it's creative, it works, it's inclusive, it moves the market, it stabilizes soft land values in key areas. It's really something to build on. That plus Invest DSM are two really good examples of market interventions with city leadership. So I would call those important successes and building blocks. On the affordability side, the Ion Repair Program is fantastic. It works, and the work of Habitat is an example of nonprofit providers you partner with, committed to addressing the affordability issue, and their successes on that side of the coin. This isn't an exclusive list, an exhaustive list by any means of your successes, but the successes do exist, and they're really important. And they're very important because they're building blocks. So now you pivot and you look ahead to the next 20 years, and what does that suggest, you know, that is on the horizon? One, I would draw your attention to the middle column on the far right, and that is your -- the county and the regions and the states' rate of growth the last 20 years, right? So you can see, in some cases, double digits, but quite significant, right? And so I and my colleagues tend to think of this as almost like Russian nesting dolls, you know, Des Moines inside the county, inside the two-county area, inside the three-county area, inside the state, inside the plains. And what's notable here is that the projections for all going forward is a slower rate of growth. And to the extent that you get a share of the county, which gets a share of the region and of the state, and to the extent that about 90 of the 99 counties, right, are tapped out in terms of giving you more bodies, right, and that the plains themselves, right, are in the same respect tapped out, right? Setting aside anomalies, setting aside what we can't predict, it's a slower rate of growth. So getting a share, what that means is likely a smaller share of a smaller share of a smaller share. And that means you've got to compete much more aggressively and successfully than in the past. So as successful as you've been the last 20 years, it's actually the mandate is to become even more successful going forward. Now is not the time to take the foot off the gas, right? We project, based on this, probably about 630 new, net new households a year for the next 15 to 18 years. And so that's highly contingent. It's if the city share of the county population holds and if household sizes remain the same. So you could have further shrinkage of household sizes as we age, as we, you know, don't produce families of the same size. That 630 could rise to 650, 680. At the same time, again, anomalies, economic events could, you know, change that number. But 630 is a good number to, I think, wrap your head around, right? And so now you've got 630, and that's, in our view, as you're crafting housing policy, underscores the importance of how you spend, what those resources you've got really matter. So 59 plus 5, 64 is going out the door every year historically. Now, that's in the rearview mirror. You come to the present day, and we've got 600, 650 net new households a year going forward. What's the extent to which the manner in which you're spending $60, $65 million a year actually works to your advantage to address some of those fair-share deficits that you've got in terms of your competitive position in the region? So we see, as I mentioned on our first meeting a few weeks ago, about three, really, they're probably combinations of these, but there are three paths that we think you can take. One is to continue on your -- the current path. The second is what we would call making some hard choices and cutting some expenses. And then the third is to make equally, if not more difficult, choices in order to address structural issues. So that's how we have begun to think about now, what would we recommend for the city of Des Moines? So let's go through these. Continue on your current path. And so as we said at the outset, depending on how you count the abatement, which can show up on either side of the ledger, right, depending on whether you're including the TIF, which is also a moving target, you're somewhere in that 59, and then also depending on how you factor in, you know, county spending, you're in that 59 to $84 million a year flow, right? And that's a function of state, federal, county resources, the sales tax, CIP, and then with those resources, you're underwriting Blitz on Blight, underwriting the abatement, underwriting Invest DSM, NFC, other nonprofit partners, and marrying those to your capital improvements. So that's your current path, right? I'm aware that you've got a budget deficit this year, and without straying too far from my wheelhouse, what I -- one path to think about is, well, gosh, if 59 to $84 million a year are going out the door, is any of that something that you could save and apply toward the deficit? So we think you can find, it's not an easy find, it's not a pleasant find, but you can probably find something on the order of $14 million out of those housing spending, you know, by finding, cutting Ion, cutting Blitz on Blight, pulling back on other small programs, pulling back on support for Invest DSM. Those would be ways to find quite a significant amount of money. So to go back, you could stay on the current path, and that's really, you know, a 60-plus TIF obligation. You could actually make some significant cuts, address some significant pieces of the current budget deficit. Those are two options I think any council would want to consider.
How do you get -- go ahead. I just wondered how you got to the 8 million for the NFC, NDC, and Invest. I thought it was 7.
It could be 7.8. I haven't seen the --
Don't we do a million each?
NDC option.
Okay, all right. Okay.
-- come into this, because NFC doesn't give money away. We're just investing it, and that's a completely different kind of program.
No, it's housing, though. We tried to --
Yeah.
But I don't understand what you mean.
We still give a million of our budget.
Right.
That's why I would say.
Right. But that, but they do, they handle their money differently than Invest DSM does or NDC. I think we heard that from Stephanie when she was in here.
Right, I want to be clear, I'm not recommending, you know, any of these cuts. It's really just making note of the fact that there's ornaments to be removed from the tree. There's trimming that could occur, whatever that is, it could be, they could be reallocated, right?
With council.
Yes.
And I assume you didn't include abatement on here, but we could change our abatement policy, and in the earlier slide, that was, I think, 8 to 11 million. That would fit on here as well.
Is that Josh?
Yeah, Josh is in.
Yes, this is Josh. And those are, I can hear Charles really well. I can't hear the back and forth among --
I don't know if anybody, you guys got your --
I had mine.
Counselor and mayor.
Morning, Josh.
Charles, can I?
Yes.
Just a quick note to Scott. We've been pretty transparent about our budget deficit. Like, this 14 million isn't 14 of the 17, because some of it is other sources and other bonds, other things that go into it. So I just thought we should draw that.
That's none of our 17.
Actually, it is. The Invest slash Ion is being looked at for that $1 million range of cuts as part of the 17 million.
But this is not a direct, this 14 is not of the 17.
No, it's just coincidence that that --
That's all.
Right, yeah.
Yes, so about a million of it looking at Ion at the right moment.
But you're looking at Ion, but there hasn't, I mean, I know we had initial talks about Invest, but I thought that was off the table.
I heard that Ion, I believe Ion's the better choice, and that's what's being recommended.
Okay. Maybe I could take a step back and clarify a few things. So first, on the abatement. Yes, the abatement would be something that is worth considering, you know? Again, it's a, the abatement's a bit complicated because it's on both sides of the ledger, but it's something, you know, that may be worth examining. I really took the, our approach was not to apply theoretical savings to this year's particular budget, but to recognize this year you have a deficit, and going forward, actually, it would be prudent to think, are these programs that we're really committed to supporting? That was the purpose here. And so if you're really committed to supporting them, then these programs and this manner of spending continues forward, right? The third is to make, so just as those would be very difficult choices to make, the third is to make some other difficult choices, or we think difficult, and that really falls into what we would call the rethink and reallocate path. So you can see here, on the stay the course, there's high opportunity costs, you have a significant free rider problem, there are budgetary challenges, you've got important and notable successes, and it's also mostly non-local. So while you're pushing 68, 64 out the door, 36 is federal, right? So that's not insignificant. That plus county, which, you know, it's a lot of non-local money with, you know, it's putting wind at your back. If you cut way back, reduce spending is a plus, you're increasing the percentage of all housing dollars coming from non-local sources. In some respects, that's a plus. There are high and other opportunity costs by cutting way back, and there are budgetary challenges that go with that. In the systems approach, digging deep requires really a change in approach, change in some thinking. Some may view that as not so much positive, but maybe a negative because of just the difficulty of making those changes. A systems approach would, simply because you have to, you'd be spending your own money, so that's always difficult. It would very likely mean new roles, and you would do all of that, really, to leave your successors with a healthier balance sheet on the housing front. So that's how we would recommend you think about it. So I'll go through these a little bit, come to the end here. Yep, Josh?
I have a quick question before you go on. The federal and state dollars, the non-local dollars, do we have any discretion with how those are used, or are those pretty much carved up in pots that we don't have? I mean, we have some discretion, obviously, because we can pick projects, but what kind of discretion and flexibility do we have with that piece of the pot?
Josh, I could probably answer that with, think of that as your tax credit funds that would come in. Those are not decisions that are being made at the city level. There is home funds that the city does make decisions on. Those would be the two larger sources.
You have considerable discretion with your CDBG funding?
CDBG.
Considerable, you know, I mean, it's all within, you know, some fairly well-defined swim lanes, and so there's not a lot of maneuvering room, but there's some maneuvering room. And I think it's a really good question, because while we would encourage taking advantage of whatever flexibility is there to make modifications as you consider going forward.
Is there a match, though, that we have to have for some of those funds, or no?
Usually, there is, it's a portion of it.
Some, but you're an entitlement situation, so those are going to flow, and both the amount and the rules are very much out of your hands.
So out of the 41 million, we really don't have any of a match to that from the state and federal dollars we're getting? We're not obligated to put any of our dollars in that?
There are some matches, but it's nominal.
That's correct. Tax credits might have some matches, but for the most part, CDBG, you don't have.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So if we now come to how to think about this, what we are thinking is that on that 41 that you just raised, obviously, keep it, but we would modify it where possible. So for instance, right, there, in your flexibility, right, is how much emphasis, for instance, to give to rental versus homeownership? How much emphasis that you may wish to put on new construction versus rehabilitation? How much emphasis, you know, where to draw what lines and really how to aim those dollars? So there are some modifications in there that we would recommend. With the sales tax and the capital improvements budget, we would recommend repurposing that. I'll talk about that in a minute. With the abatement, we would recommend the housing portion of that be repurposed, and we would recommend that an additional roughly $8 million a year would need to be raised through what we're just labeling here for discussion purposes, a redevelopment bond, right? And that that would bring you from about 64 up to 72. And the key piece here is through the manner of the repurposing, and with the advent of the redevelopment bond, that 72 is not just an additional 8. What it is, it's a different 72 than you would, it's a different 64 and an 8, which we think will pull about almost $30 million of buyer financing off the sidelines, and that plus your TIF will put you at a much larger position to be much more aggressive on the housing front, especially on the market side, where a lot of work is needed. So to review this, left to right, you've got state, federal, and county at the 41 level. That's a big piece of this, that's a flow in, and you, those resources plus other resources are going toward Invest DSM at a very high, at a very high number. They're going toward Ion at a considerable number. Blitz on Blight is not an inconsiderable number. The abatement is a significant amount of resources. And then TIF and sales tax and the CIP are all in this mix, right? What we would recommend is little to no change on that federal, state, county side, no change on Blitz on Blight, right? So those are good, important, sizable resources on the far left, and a significant and thoughtful program right there in the middle, okay?
I have a question on Blitz on Blight.
Yep.
And this maybe is less Charles, more Scott, but my understanding is that with Blitz on Blight, we've kind of gotten a low-hanging fruit, and that there are fewer homes that are nuisance and working their way through courts and in the demolish, but I haven't had an update on that, so I could be way off base, but I wouldn't mind an update on where we're at, and is the Blitz on Blight the right amount for those? I mean, Charles, I'm hearing you say we do have that, but I guess I haven't had an update. We've been spending a decent amount of money, and I know we've taken down a lot of nuisance homes. So what's the status of that?
Yeah, and I can get you more details on that, councilman, but you are correct in that there is, when you look at it citywide, we've handled the quicker projects and demolition that was needed, and we're at a point where we could, if we stayed the course, lowered the amount on Blitz on Blight. But what you're seeing here with this option to grow the effort is we're going to need some of that Blitz on Blight funds for the solutions that are coming up on the next few slides. And so this recommendation includes some of the Blitz on Blight being identified for this specific purpose that aren't citywide, but rather more focused. It'll make more sense, and you see the next couple slides that are going to require some additional demolition funds.
I'd also say that even if it was low-hanging fruit, it wasn't low enough for us to get before Blitz on Blight, and we needed to do that.
What we like about it is it recognized the problem, it targeted funds, it used local funds, and it has a power -- used local funds and, and, and it has a powerful multiplier, positive multiplier effect on surrounding properties. That's the takeaway on that. And so it's, 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 we think it's really recommendable. If we proceed further, the $5 million now allocated to Invest DSM by the city matched by the county, we would recommend that the city share move to $10 million. The success of Invest DSM is statistically unimpeachable. It's, it's, it's empirically sound.
Are you going to create more districts then?
I think you have, you have to create more districts. Absolutely.
Somewhere on the west side.
Not in Ward 4.
We would recommend ion grow by about 2.3x. We like what ion does. We think ion is well, again, well conceived and, and well suited for the, for the challenges you've got. So we would recommend big, big, big growth for Invest DSM and even bigger growth for the ion program.
Do we have projects in, that are ready to go for ion that would use that dollar amount?
Not that dollar amount, but because we've slowed down on the marketing aspect of what we're doing. And understand, there's a direct tie between the property maintenance code and ion.
Right.
And so we cannot lean forward on the property maintenance code until we have more funds for ion.
Understandable.
We would try to capture the, the $8 million of the $11 million abatement and rethink how that is, how that is deployed. We would recommend that, as we mentioned previously, the CIP and sales tax funding be redirected, reconceived, and if possible, depending on market conditions, TIF even be enlarged, you know, again, as market conditions show. So again, what that, you know, looks like is 41 plus three when we, when we package state, federal and county along with Blitz on Blight. Some of these are fungible. So, you know, what you're, what you're seeing here is a little, little bit of mixing and matching to sort of make, make the sources and uses work. Scaled up ion, scaled up Invest DSM. What we would then add is what we would call a component called whole block redevelopment. As I mentioned at a few weeks ago and at the outset, you are sitting on 45,000 smaller, older, often neglected homes that pose real challenges. There's a lot of ways to think about those 45,000 homes, right? But I think the most important way that I would recommend you think about them is that they, almost all of them are in what we would call a motivational dead zone. They, they, they are in a condition, they're at a moment in their life cycle where the only thing that makes financial sense for them is to bleed them down over time. And that means they're probably as good as they're ever going to get. And that's why staying the course actually is not sound policy. And that's why cutting actually isn't sound policy, right? It's an albatross. That motivational dead zone is significant. At the risk of, of an analogy where it's a little applesy and a little pearsy, right? Those 45,000, we, it's the, it is the real estate equivalent, right? The average tax credit project in the United States is about 81 units. This is the real estate equivalent of 500 tax credit projects, okay, that were built 40 years ago, right, and they're about to flip for the third time, okay? And when you have stocks that were of marginal quality at one end, and then you extract its value for a decade or two and then refinance it, not, not with conventional money, but with public money, and then you rinse, wash, repeat another 15 years, and then do it again for a third cycle, you'll end up with, with 500 tax credit projects in the form of scattered site, single family homes across the city, right, constituting 10% of your housing stocks, right, and sitting on about 10% or little less than 10% of your, your land area. Okay? That's 4,800 acres, right, of 58,000 acres, right, where you've got your, your most challenged of those 45,000. So you've got 45,000 of these. The most challenged are about 7,000, which are, which are on blocks that are 100% one bathroom homes, both sides, right? So you have 281 blocks, 281 blocks where every house on both sides of the street is a one bathroom house, right? That sits on about 4,800 acres, right? And they constitute, that's a portion of what constitutes a significant challenge to the city. And, and I will tell you, those stocks are as good as they're ever going to get. Now, the upside of that is that is a significant repository of naturally occurring affordable housing. So as you think about what direction to take, you have to weigh that significant plus versus the fact that they're as good as they're ever going to get and no private market is going to solve that problem for you. And therefore, only public money is going to begin to chip away at that. And you, you want to be thinking, how do we do that? You know? So that's where we take you to what we, what we think is a whole block approach. So we.
May I interject?
Please.
I question how affordable some of those homes really are. You know, they're smaller homes and one might say, well, that makes them affordable. But if they have pretty good sized yards, grass to cut, no insulation, you're paying more money in heating and cooling, how affordable are they really?
It's a great, it's a great point. In fact, it's a, I had that question just last Thursday or Friday when I was working through the slides and was, with, with some, with some granularity, determined actually, they're quite expensive. When you start folding in, but it's, but it's affordable relatively speaking. But when you fold in utility costs, when you fold in deferred maintenance and catch-up costs, when you actually take a look at what an operating statement for an absentee or investor owner, you know, is facing, when you take a look at the older furnace, the roof, the windows, everything else that requires continual upgrades, and you set that alongside of the incomes of households, households there, you actually end up with value to income ratios and rent to income ratios that, that when you fact, especially when you factor in those utility costs, you actually, it raises an important question. So they're affordable relatively, but for many, they're not affordable. It's a great point.
And isn't the, these are the homes that are now becoming the rental property that you say will increase?
Yes. It, it, that doesn't mean that, that buyers aren't going to buy some. It doesn't mean that you won't have buyers selling to buyers, I mean, owners selling to buyers, and it doesn't mean, or homeowners selling to another homeowner. That's all true. The numbers are big enough that you'll see some of that. But as a general trend, I think that it's, I, well, I can confidently say, it, the, the tenure is going to change and the condition is going to decline, right? There's, in other words, there's no upside for the alternative to occur unless you do something.
Charles, are, are we at 45,000 homes or 40,000? Because the slides say 40, but I thought you mentioned 45.
It's, it's, it's 40,000 one bathroom homes, but it's about 45,000 poorly configured, hard to market homes that, that present some, some, some long-term challenges. So five of that 45 has one and a half, two bathrooms. They're in a little bit better condition, a little bit, a little bit bigger, but, but still quite, quite challenged. Yes. Great question. So whole block redevelopment is, is what we would add to your, so you have a, this is a really fine tool chest. Any tool chest that has the programs that are administered by Chris Johansson's shop, has Blitz on Blight and has ion and Invest DSM is, is a well, I mean, it's a well crafted toolkit, right? We think you need another, another tool in there. And that's, that's the whole block redevelopment. So we, we've looked at a variety of, not an exhaustive list, but we looked at a variety of locations. So as I said, there's about 280 blocks that are sat, you know, uniform, one bathroom homes, right? So you're many, many more hundreds of blocks that have 50%, 60%, 70%, but, but, but really taking a, a good geographic look at the various locations where you have a lot of these homes. We went through, looked at them, looked at their densities. We looked at the commercial corridors right next to them. Not surprisingly, the commercial corridors next to blocks where, that, that are, that we've talked about. Those commercial corridors are struggling. The cap rates are, you know, they're, they're questionable. You've got a lot of vacant lots, a lot of used car lots, a lot of, you know, just businesses that are wobbly, sometimes questionable. We've done a pretty hard look at them. But in any case, those commercial corridors are underutilized. They're, they're, they're fairly fallow pieces of real estate. And so the takeaway here is most of the residential areas are sitting somewhere between five, five and seven units an acre, and they are very close to underperforming commercial corridors. There's, this is by no means an exhaustive list, but you can see, it's quite, it represents quite a, quite a geography to, to consider. Right? So in a whole block redevelopment concept where we've got five to seven units an acre, 12, 12 homes aside, again, you've got some streets that have, you know, 20, 20, 22, 23 aside, others, you know, six, eight, 10 aside, but on balance, 12 aside, 300 blocks in the city with, with nearby commercial that needs work. We, we would recommend you start to think very strategically about redeveloping those blocks in the next 20 to 30 years, in some cases, increasing the density to begin getting the land under that closer to a point where the private sector might be willing to take on some of the risk, probably at 10 to 12 units an acre, which would grow maybe at 12 homes per side of a street to about 18. And, and we, we would recommend you think about a rate, a work rate of about three to six blocks at a time, right, along with the commercial around the area, right? So the, in here, what you can see is both a factual representation, but also, you know, an illustrative representation of what you've got in Des Moines. So this is a six block area, right? As you recall, we've twice in the last eight years gone and put eyes on all 72,000 of your homes. We know the condition of the homes by the street address. And so this is an actual block that you have in the city. And you can see that you've got some red structures that are quite challenged. At the other end of the spectrum, you've got a few holdouts that are quite well maintained and a significant number that are average and or trending down, right? And so whole block redevelopment would, would, as we're recommending it, rehab about a third of a set of blocks for marketability, right? Rehab about a third to keep affordable and acquire about a half and redevelop about that land underneath at a higher density for new infill. And along the way, when, when master planned and in close coordination with, with TIF work and, and CIP work, really begin to think about nearby commercial corridors, right? So what you would end up with is some areas of slightly higher density, slightly high, higher FAR, not too high where you don't transition nicely into the set fabric that's traditional and expected. You would have the upgrading over a decade or so of those, those three, four, five, six blocks. And you would have a series of, of partners, partners in, in each endeavor. So to rehab about a third for marketability, you know, the, the sales tax really becomes a pivotal piece of the sources. Invest DSM could theoretically play a profoundly important role. In terms of rehabbing a third and keeping it affordable, again, utilizing sales tax and then relying on, on NFC and ion and Blitz on Blight would be an example, you know, along with Habitat, for instance, of keeping a third affordable. And then using the redevelopment bond plus captured, repurposed abatements along with the private sector, that, that would position about half the land to get redeveloped as infill. That again, plus TIF would put the commercial corridor in play as well. Now, in this, these, these thirds and thirds and halves only actually materialize after you've done 20 or 30 of these blocks and zoom out and look at the percentages. On any given face, any given block, any given set of blocks, you could end up 80, 20, 80, 10, 10, 40, 20, 20, 20, you know, so you just, you just don't know, right, until, because the conditions are, they're going to vary block by block. The way we would recommend you think about this is the transformation moving left to right from the block on the left, which you've got, so what you see up there, six on the left, right? So 50 of those would comprise your 281 that are all one bathroom sections, okay? So if we just invented the word section here and applied it here for six blocks, that would give you, it's about 20 acres. But what you've got on the left are six blocks converted to the six blocks on the right, we think it's about $20 million a shot. And that would involve acquisition, demolition, infill. It would increase marketability, demand and values. It would be pretty intensive. It's pretty complicated. You couldn't do it on day one. You'd have to scale up. You'd have to build a system. It would take you a while to build the system. And you'd have to have staying power to actually, you know, you're taking, you're, you're consuming an elephant one bite at a time. It's going to take quite a while. Okay? There's a stack involved here, and that is it's working from the bottom up. It's reconceiving your abatement, your sales tax, your capital improvements, laying on top of that, the bond financing, and on top of that, new buyer owner financing. The way we have penciled this out is about 70, 70% of that 15 to 20 million. So there's your effort. It's about 15 to 20 million dollars. You know, let's just say it's 18. So you can, you can effectively, whatever a third of 18 is, I think it's six. So that's, that's 70% of, you know, 6 million of that would be public and two thirds of, and 12 would be private. That private, we don't think comes off the sidelines until the stack looks like this, right? So that motivational dead zone, right, it, it's, what's on the left, we should come back to this. What you see here, you can expect half of the yellows to turn orange?
These are owner occupied homes that we're talking about.
Oh, it's about 75% owner occupied. Yes. About 70, it's, it would depend on 68 to 70%, yes. Yeah.
So how, how?
Do you want to have a how? I want to, yeah, it's time to do a how. I don't want to do a how either, but.
These are people living in these homes. I mean, how do we?
You'd have to make a fair market offer.
And then where are they going to go?
Wherever they want with whatever the offer is.
And possibly the new.
Very possibly. So here on.
We're two.
If they can barely afford the homes they're in now, how in the world are they going to afford new construction, especially when you've taken away tax abatement?
That is an ion.
I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't even make sense to me.
For those households, there are options with ion.
Scott, come on.
But, you know, to, to Councilman Simonton's point, I mean, the utilities in the, in the, I mean, that is additional dollars that they're going to have to keep putting in to where a, a new construction home, you're not going to be putting in those.
So you've got two gaps to close. On any given piece of property or any aggregated set of properties, there are two gaps to close. Well, let me, let me say it a different way. If the problem you set out to solve is to address the current, let's just take these six blocks, okay? The problem you set out to solve is to address these six blocks which are at their, the best condition they're ever going to be for the balance of your and my lifetimes, okay?
Agreed.
All right. Then you're going to have a market gap to close, right?
Mm-hmm.
That is no less than $75,000 apiece, right? And, and probably considerably more, right? All right. We actually think the, the sunk costs on addressing that are going to be close to 150 to 180,000 dollars for each of these. Okay? Now, if in addition, if in addition to addressing the market gap problem, you want to ensure that it is redeveloped with some affordability provision, you have a second gap to close. So that, your point on the affordability piece is, it's absolutely critical. That is a second check to write. Okay? And so when we look at those costs at 15 to 20 million dollars per block, not per, so that, that photo, that's, I actually didn't even notice that until now. Take that 15 to 20, right? That has to be multiplied times six to actually hit that, that square up there.
I, I think you're right on the problem. And, you know, neighborhoods like this. I, I think you're right on the problem. And, you know, neighborhoods like this are littered in my area. I think the first time I talked to NDC and NFC and Invest DSM, this is what I talked about. But the budget seems out of whack for, for what the, what the work to be done is. And I'm just wondering if you could talk about that. Because if each block is a block, in your illustration, I think each block is 10 houses on each side of the street, 20 houses, which it, which it...
It averages out. There's some high, some low, but across the city, it's about 12 per side.
All right.
Yeah.
So how, I mean, that's, I think, I don't think it costs anywhere near 20 million to do what you want to do.
Well, if you, if you...
Not for 20 houses a block. I mean, are you...
So if you were to redevelop the whole block, which is what your private sector will tell you is necessary for them to participate in any block transformation, you have what we estimate to be $150,000 to $180,000 per parcel as sunk costs before you do anything. Because you have to make an offer to existing owners to sell. Right? If I'm sitting on a rental property that is valued at $128,000, right, and somebody is offering, an entity is offering me, right, a private sector entity offers $150,000, I might actually take $150,000 and walk away from the rent stream and walk away from the hassle of managing that property. So that is low-hanging fruit, right, from a redevelopment point of view. It is not without challenges. Right? There's no way to redevelop your 281 blocks that are end-to-end one-bathroom homes, right, and wind up on the right side of a balance sheet without great difficulty. The issue you face is that it's worse if you don't do it. There's no way, I can put it any plainer than that. You have a bad option and a less bad option.
If we want to cover the services that we need to cover.
That is correct. Now, you could, you could hold steady and say, well, you know, that is too difficult. It is too expensive. It's too odious. I can't take that. I can't take that back to my districts. Which point, you can stay the course here or modify this current course. But if you modify this current course, at the margins, you will end up still with 40 to 45,000 structures, right, through one form of attrition or another that are going to still stay as 50, 60% of your housing stocks. There's simply no, there's no, there's no magic wand. It's expensive and difficult, or it's expensive and difficult.
Well, I guess I have a question in terms of just some of the way this is framed up. Hey, and I get the challenges with, with the existing housing stock. But, but if we're trying to fill the market gap piece of this, I, yeah, maybe we could acquire and do some of this whole block development. But I think that gets, that's really challenging. And to effectively do whole block development, you'd probably need eminent domain, which is a tool we don't have for this type of purpose. Why, why was there not maybe more of the focus on some of the things that we're already doing to build the market-rate housing? The market districts, the south of Great Lake district, some of the corridors where you could really add a lot more density and a mix of housing that we don't currently have and build on sort of the, the strength of the urban environment. And that's, that's where the focus on the market, the market housing would be. Now, you still have this problem with, with these blocks that you've identified in, in the ancient housing stock. But, but it seems like that's where we have, to me, it seems like that's where we have the opportunity in, in these districts and on these corridors to grow the market, the market gap piece of this. And that seems completely missing from this strategy. And, and I think you can incorporate some of the affordability into that, too, if you, if you do it right, depending on how you use the tools. Now, it, it doesn't address the existing housing stock, but it seems like that's a pretty important piece of any broader housing strategy, and I don't see any of that here.
We certainly would continue, recommend that you continue taking every opportunity where you've got land and you've got, we've identified the acreage, you've got plenty of acreage, there's lots of opportunities to continue, as we would recommend, with TIF multifamily, with new construction, absolutely, those make, make sense. We would not take your foot off the pedal of that at all. I would draw your attention to the point I made earlier, which is you're never going to grow at the rate you have been growing. This region is not going to have double-digit growth going forward. Right? Demographics do not show that that is possible. Right? And so because of that, and because of the net new numbers that we project, right, you will still end up with 95% of the stocks at your, at your highest new construction numbers. 25 years from now, you will have 95% will still, of your stocks 25 years from now, even if you exploit all of those new opportunities, 95% of the stocks 25 years from now will be what you have today. And these 45,000 stocks will be in a more degraded condition. So it is a both-and, there's no question. As to the question of eminent domain, we didn't factor eminent domain into it. I wouldn't touch it. Wouldn't touch it. Don't recommend it. It's not worth discussing. This would be fair market value, voluntary offers. We suspect that if the offer is set high enough, you will, and it is well-timed, that you will be able to find in 281 blocks, blocks here, blocks there. We, you will not likely get end-to-end every single one of those structures, which is why the math will change, you know, a block to block and block to block. But we think that three to six blocks per year over a series of 20 years will allow you to begin clawing, clawing back at this.
So question for you, Scott, and I appreciate this, a lot of information, but dollar-wise, in the environment of our budget right now, well, I mean, how do we move this forward if we, if, if we all bought into this and you told us where the areas were for this redevelopment and we can go back to our district and say, yes, you know, Councilman Coleman, you know, Councilmember Westergaard had some in her area. I have some. Councilman Mandelbaum had some. How, are we able to, are we able to do that this year in our current environment?
Well, I understand. It would take quite a bit of planning. And we wanted to see if the concept was, was something you would entertain before we get all of the numbers. Understand, the largest addition would be the bond, the redevelopment bond, which is a borrowing.
Yep.
But then we would need to look at scale and come back with what that would mean from a staffing as well in the ION and what that might mean, obviously contributions to Invest DSM, Habitat and the others. So there'd be quite a bit of work yet that we would need to do to show you how this could work.
I mean, we're, we're talking about going into neighborhoods, giving them fair market value, moving everyone out and bulldozing it.
Correct.
No, it's a mix.
It's a mix.
So where that's appropriate, where you see a lot of red properties, so to speak.
Right.
That would be that, that portion.
Then the ones in yellow and orange, they would get, you would add another bathroom. You would add, I mean...
Yes.
Side, do you like the ION?
Yes. You, you would expect with a, with a 2.3x expansion of the ION program, you would expect ION to have a heavy role in block transformation.
Okay.
With a significant upgrade of the, significant increased investment in Invest DSM, you would expect to see transformation of a number of structures, depending on, you know, the SID selection and how you began to master plan these areas. Your partnerships with other nonprofits would play a role. You would expect some demolition, some infill at higher densities. Each block would be different. You could, it would be, it would be a Heinz 57.
Okay.
But you, what you would be endeavoring to do is to provide the private sector with predictable, predictable, public sector role and the capacity to acquire a number of properties at one shot so that they could get a critical mass for infill. Right? So that, all of those would be in play.
An additional TIF would be set up on, on corridors that don't have it already. Is that, is that what you're talking about also?
Again, it'll depend on the choice of location, but yes.
Because he even mentioned Southwest 9th. We have no urban utilization on that street.
Right, but you'd want to see that. We look at that.
I've asked for that for eight years.
You'd want those blocks transformed and, and that, you want commercial, right, right in there to serve those neighborhoods at a high level.
I think the other long game, when you have homeowners that simply, they, they might be interested in some improvements to their property.
There'd be owner-occupied rehab without question.
And, but there might be an opportunity for first right refusal for us to then be the purchaser when they are ready to move out. So there's going to be a long game here as well, especially when you think of our senior citizens that might just want to stay in their home for another five, eight years. I'm sorry, I'm looking at you. We might, we might be able to help them through ION to be more comfortable in their property. And then we would receive that property.
I think we've already seen that ION program and the people that we've, I've heard from, the people have taken advantage of what, how it's transformed their ability to stay in their home. Linda, you were next.
I guess when we talk about, you know, I heard, I heard Charles say, you know, one-bathroom homes. Nobody wants a one-bathroom home. And I disagree with that. I think that we have a lot of people that are very comfortable with a one-bedroom home. I've been in my house for 48 years, one bathroom, 48 years. So to, to say that we want to displace somebody, and I heard you say very flippantly, say, well, fair market value, fine, you tell some...
I didn't say that flippantly.
I heard it that way.
Perhaps, but I didn't say it flippantly.
When you talk about East 14th, and I'm thinking of one homeowner that I know that's been in that house for like 35, 40 years. It's, she's a single woman, one bathroom home. She doesn't need anything else. Her home is paid for. She's got her community around her. And then to say, well, give her fair market value. What's that going to be? $150,000? What could she go out and replace that for today for $150,000? She couldn't do it. She couldn't do it. I couldn't replace my home today for, for what, for what the fair market value would be. So I think we have, I don't understand why the city is all of a sudden wanting to become a developer.
She will have that choice if we, and, let me ask, have you understood what's been said about if we do nothing?
I, I understand that, but I think we have other options besides doing nothing. You know, when you talk about Invest DSM, we went into neighborhoods that were on the brink, could go either way.
Correct.
ION is also filling that. NFC is right there. They have programs that you can get your house, you know, you can do energy assistance programs. There's money for, for new furnaces. There are lots of things that we can do to preserve this housing stock.
Sure.
And preserve the people that live there. Why are we talking about displacing, giving, give the whole block fair market value? You know what happened when we bought Four Mile? All those people moved out of Des Moines. Those people moved to the suburbs.
For the stormwater buyout?
Yes.
That needed to happen.
I agree. I pushed for that.
Somebody moved to my neighborhood.
But they didn't stay in Des Moines.
Some did.
Right. So the key here is to unlock private dollars. Right? Because there's no way this works, not even worth talking about if this was all public funds. And so you have to build the interest and opportunities for the private to invest in these, right? That's why, think of, like, again, Invest DSM is very focused geographically. The programs you mentioned, all great programs, but the way we're implementing those right now, they're spread out over the whole city. Right? So if you're, if we're IONS working on one or two homes per block, if even that, you're not going to unleash the opportunities with private dollars until you say, this is an area we're going to fully address.
So basically, you're not saying we're not going to work with all these programs as a concentration within an area to make faster change.
As a team.
Within that area.
Tell that to the people that you're going to take their houses.
Well, you're not going to take people's homes.
But we're not, we're not doing eminent domain on anyone's house.
Nobody has to...
No one has to, no one has to sell their house, right?
Right.
You don't even have to legally... I mean, we're, we're not, we're not, we're not saying we're going in and taking your house.
Do you think all these people are going to want to sell their houses?
I do not.
We don't need them to.
We don't want them to. We don't want them to. We want to be able to fix their homes. It's not about taking people's homes at all.
And if they don't want to sell their house, their value will go up.
Oh, I mean, it's just like they might need some help.
They may change their mind later.
But what I heard him say is you give fair market value so you can, can do infill and bring in new housing.
Yes.
That's part of the strategy.
Okay, all right, I'm done.
So, um...
I'm done.
What role will our public schools play in this? Because if, if we're trying to attract families to this six-block area, we have to be sure that it's perceived as being, that our schools are perceived as being desirable.
It's a great question. I would respectfully say, you're not trying to attract families. You're trying to attract buyers, trying to attract good buyers. Some will be families, some will not be families. Some will be families with, that have, that aren't going to have kids. But you're just trying to attract good buyers, which is what you'll be, which you will almost certainly not be obtaining in the critical mass needed if you stay the course. What, what will happen is many of your seniors, right, are actually not going to, they're going to age in place. And, and what's going to happen is their son, who lives in Galena, is going to acquire that house and, and decide not to sell it. And they're going to become an absentee owner. And they're not going to have the $50,000 to upgrade the house that it needs, right? That, because the house had been neglected for 25 or 30 years. It is not a scare tactic, Councilman. It is not a scare tactic. For 30 years, I have seen neighborhoods across the country decline through attrition this way. All right? The market is not strong enough for there to be an alternative outcome. I'm sorry. I understand that.
Years, and I have not seen that. So you're using scare tactics.
No, I'm not.
Yes, it is.
Whatever, whatever words we're using, I do think there's a math equation, which is if you own property, is it worth the investment? And earlier, earlier this year, I don't think she's here, many of you know Lulu Dickey, she sent me a long article about how absentee owners milk property. So, you know, a couple of columns, like, you put money into it, you not put money into it. And the most effective way to make money off of a distressed house is to never put money into it. To, to take the rent, let it dilapitate and, and, and bleed it to death, basically, over a decade or two.
Councilman's...
And that's happening all over our city.
So, so let me, let me speak to that. It's a critical point. Rental property has three, there are three fruits of rental property. Okay? One is the, is the upside, the future value when I sell the property. All right? Now, the future value is determined in a number of ways. There's an income approach. There are, there are a number of ways to determine that future value. But one, one of the benefits of owning rental property is future value. Right? As rental properties, the future value here in, in these neighborhoods on these blocks is going down. So that, for an investor, takes one of the three benefits of owning rental property off. All right? When, when properties are in that yellow condition as rentals and headed to a little bit further decline, right, those properties without future value have two more, two, two benefits left. The second of the three benefits is tax, tax, the tax benefit of, of owning rental property. Right? Well, that tax benefit, as it gets more and more degraded, and you're putting less and less into it, and you're able to get less and less in terms of rent, your rents, right, your tax benefits go down. So that's two of the three. That leaves you with only cash flow. Right? Right? And at that stage of a property, when you're looking at those properties up there on that slide, that are yellow, that are orange, and that have already turned red, you are down only to cash flow. And the cash flow, the difference between the cash coming in and paying your taxes is just a little bit. Right? And that's what you're left with. You're left with tens of thousands of properties that are and/or will be in that position of having once in 1950 had three benefits of, of investor ownership, then by 1980 had two, and today have one. Right? They're being bled down. That's why they're as good as they're going to be. Right? And when you have owner occupants who pass on these properties to their children, I remember having a conversation actually with one of the county supervisors, I believe his mother was in Fairgrounds, and just talked about, for instance, the, the slow degradation of the property, the blocks, the, the homes on, on his mother's block, right? And, and then eventually the bleeding down of each of those particular properties and saying, what can we do about this? Right? So that's the situation you're in. It's actually, it's, it's, it's not going to fix itself. You're exactly right.
Well, I didn't get to finish my.
Schools.
But I wouldn't think we should embark on any of this without having a deep discussion with the nearby schools, just what's happening there, so.
I think that would be a very smart strategy. It'd be very, very smart to have that as part of a strategy. Let me, let me take my finger off the scales for, for a second and come back to your options. You have other options. Right? One option is to continue doing what you're doing, but change a few things. Right? You could, you could stay exactly where you are for, actually, let's use a different slide. You could, it would be, there would be no, looking at this slide, you could just take out the whole block redevelopment, right? Not do that. You could scale up ION, scale up Invest DSM, hold steady with state, federal and county, hold steady on blitz on blight. Right? Think about, you know, how you handle your abatement. You could ratchet up, you know, TIF on some of the, some of the corridors and rebalance your CIP and sales tax. You could do that. You could just take out the whole block piece. Right?
But the whole block, the whole block redevelopment is the, the bonding issue, correct? That's, we're, we're bonding for that or no?
Yeah, yes, but you would have to bond for the upscaling of Invest DSM and ION here as well.
Okay.
With additional funds, because we would not have those funds.
It's a part of, it's a part of the equation, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
About our rental, I think we have a pretty good rental code right now. And we've worked on that over the years. So when I hear people say, oh, well, you know, our rentals are really bad, we've got rental inspectors. I've, in my neighborhoods, I call the, I call zoning and they're out there and they take a look at those rentals. And by golly, we have more control over those rentals than we do private owners.
Agree 100%. Your, your owner, your homeowner, your homeowners on the blocks that we've been discussing are actually.
They get a free pass.
They get a completely free pass. Totally agree. I think at this stage, what I would, what I would suggest is that for us to, so this is the last time that, you know, I'll see you on this project. As we refine the, the draft strategy to give to you, what, I think what would very much help is real direction from you all. Right? What is the extent to which you want us to finish the draft work as we've proposed? Would you want us to finish the draft work? For instance, if we look at these three options, where, you know, where do you want us to, to sharpen, sharpen the draft so that what you, what, what we convey to you is what you want?
Well, I'll sound, I'll sound like a completely broken record that I'm sure everyone in the audience have heard me say multiple times, but unless some, lot of this money's in Ward 4, since I've had zero in Ward 4, then it's a nonstarter for me. Because my constituents are going to take advantage of these programs. And, and we're going to make sure that that, that happens if we're going to, you know, do another 5 million to Invest DSM. We're going to, we're going to do these whole block things.
So geography is critical. Absolutely.
Very critical.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I think anybody that's a Ward Councilman sitting up here, you know, if, if they say anything different, then I, I would, I would be shocked.
So if it's in your ward, would you go for the whole block concept or stay the course?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, it's not like we're, we don't have much of a choice if you're not listening to what Charles and this, we did this study for, I mean, how long we've been doing this for? I think five years? You've went over our, every block twice? We know the status of our homes.
You do, we do.
You know, that, that's not, I mean, I, unless we believe that, you know, this is a complete scam and you, you've got some ulterior motives, which I don't believe that, we have some serious issues and we are at a crossroad now, you know? We're going to need to figure out a way to generate some tax dollars.
New tools.
Yes.
So Carl, what is your, we'll just go around, and Josh, we'll get you in a minute.
Be bold.
Be bold or go home? Okay, got it. Josh, are you still on the line?
I, I'm still on the line. I, I'm not.
If you want to get.
What, what I struggle with is, right, I, I want to understand this a little better and I want to understand how it fits with the other pieces that we are doing. I, I mean, I, I, I get the overall concept, but I don't think I'm fully committed to throwing all our eggs in, in this basket. I, I have a certain amount of skepticism about, about this approach and, in terms of if this is the way to bring up value and to, to be market competitive.
Okay.
Is, is there any additional information that you can think of, Josh, that would be helpful? And by the way, it isn't all the eggs in one basket. This is adding a tool and expanding several of the other strategies.
It, it, well, I, I guess helping me understand how this fits in a broader balanced approach, where, where the resources come for this.
Okay.
And how, how some of this ends up being, being executed.
There you go. Okay.
I mean, I do look at, I, I do look at the, you know, whole block redevelopment, and there are pieces that, that are appealing about that. I don't fully understand the tools that we're going to be able to, to make, to make that happen. I am, you know, I heard some folks say that they thought the cost would be less. I, I, I'm skeptical in terms of being able to do whole, whole block development, that the, the cost would be, be less. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around how that gets done. And then I want to understand the opportunity cost in terms of if we're going to put more dollars into something, are there, are there other things that in, in some of these other areas, you know, would, would we get more value out of, from just a pure tax based perspective and maybe even a vibrancy perspective? If we're going to put $15 million, new dollars above and beyond our TIF, our Invest DSM, the things that we're currently investing, if we're going to do another set of new dollars, do we get more by concentrating that in downtown and making an ambitious goal that had 15,000 more new units downtown? Does that, do we get that done for, for less investment? Yes, we still have other problems that we need to deal with, but, but do we get more housing, more market rate in that scenario? And that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Okay. Linda?
Well, I, I think that we should be completely transparent here and let our taxpayers know how much we've paid to have this study. Because we're in a huge budget crisis. And we're sitting here talking about doing bonds and having, you know, doing all of these things, when we've not visited with our partners in this. When you say you want private, have we had any discussions with our private developers, with people that, that do this all the time in our study?
So they're on the committee?
You know, and then you bring this to us today and it's like, whoa, this is all different than, than what we had talked about before in, in budgets as, as the numbers that I'm seeing, Scott, of what you and I have had. So no, I'm not going to, I think there are things that we can do, but I think there should be a lot more discussion before we start saying, oh, you know, we need to go out and have blocks of, of, of redevelopment.
Okay.
Because you said one bathroom homes. One bathroom homes are fine for some people. Not everybody needs two bathrooms.
Mike?
This has been a very helpful exercise in looking at the big picture and challenging us, because doing nothing isn't an option. I would find it most helpful if you were able to share any and all tools that other communities have used to make these kinds of projects happen, from financing to bundling properties. You, more than anybody in this room, has that knowledge and we need your help in getting those tools. We also have to focus on density. Land is land, there's only so much, so the more density we have, I'm not saying dense everywhere, but on, on the major corridors, that's where we should be focusing with density, because we have the infrastructure, we just need more units. I'm not worried about the commercial. When we address the residential, the commercial will follow. And lastly, we can never forget about affordable housing. We take a lot of affordable units off the market, rehab them, and I'm all for that. But when we start building anew, we have to include some level of affordable housing and it has to be less than 80%. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman?
In full disclosure, when I first met Charles, I thought he was as nuts as some people probably think he is today. The early conversations about Invest DSM, I think we're universally responded this way as we kind of scratched our head and I, I would say it, it's proved up really, really well. And so I have a pretty open mind when I listen to you, because I've been proven wrong before. There's two things that you asked, what, what do I, what do I think we need? I think, I think we need to go back, especially as we talk to our citizens and maybe to help us, a better understanding of, like, what, what is the real target? And in your documentation, you talked about the city's balance sheet. I think about not doing Invest DSM and NDC and, and NFC, ION, and we were on a trajectory that we weren't going to be able to maintain a high quality city, just because the trend lines were working against us. And, and I think we've stabilized that, but I'm still not sure, Scott, that we really know in real granular ways what we need to do in this community. Do, do we need, do we need, do we need those, how, how essential is it that those 45,000 houses go from being assessed at 150 to 250? Like, like how important is it for us to have any kind of quality city in an affordable budget for, for us to do that? And, and like, I, I think we're skipping a step here, which is we, we, we have a responsibility to tax our citizens and provide a great city in, in a way that makes sense for all of us. But I, I worry that we aren't going to main, be able to maintain a high quality city if, if we don't, if we, if we ignore the need to escalate property values, which is what funds our city, at all levels of the spectrum. Hundred thousand dollar houses, $200,000. And that's not to counteract, because we, I think we have to have a different strategy. And I appreciate Charles saying that at the very beginning, that there's a strategy about affordable housing, which is important, and there's a strategy about this kind of balance sheet. So that's number one. Number two, you, you started your presentation early on with a stat that, you know, to keep up, I think you passed it, is 630 in the lower corner. Yeah. Like somebody smarter than me would have to, like it would benefit me and maybe others to know, for us to really compete in the region, of those 630, how many of them are units that are for people at 60% or 50% of the area median income? How many of those 630 are for people that are first time home buyers that graduated from college a couple of years ago and are buying their, their first place in Easter Lake or, or Beaverdale or, or Grandview? And then how many are half million dollar houses that we have to think differently about how to attract? I know that we're not doing enough, but I don't think that we're doing enough in any of the three. And we need better solutions in order to fund our city over the next generation. So I think it would be helpful to kind of know, what is our target? I asked for some information last week. We approved or started or opened over 600 subsidized housing units at 80% or under. About half of them were under 80, and half of them at 80 in this, in, in 2024. So on that, on that spectrum, we're doing really, really good in terms of keeping up. We need to keep that momentum going for sure. But there has to be a different strategy for solidifying the, the budget, I think. And I, I really think that we are, I think when we try and make decisions, one budget cycle at a time, we lose track on what it is that we need to leave our successors here and the next generation of people that want to live in Des Moines. I, I, I'm, I drive up and down streets, my aunt and uncle lived on 52nd Street. Every house within six blocks was built over about a two-year period. They're all 800 to 1,000 square feet. They almost all have three bedrooms and one bath. And you couldn't find a more tranquil, peaceful, happy neighborhood anywhere. But, but that's not going to be when they switch hands the next time. You know? Too many of them are turning into rental properties, too many of them that then don't have the investment to keep up. And, and we, we need to do better in, I mean, that, every, I, I think maybe people call it this everywhere, but out in my part of the city, everybody says, those are all the World War II houses, all built in a couple of years. They're now, you said 50 years old, they're really 70 years old. And, and we just have to have a strategy there so it's a great neighborhood the next 30 years. And it's not, it's not going to be if we let the market conditions and the rental cycle happen to it.
I, I would think the whole thing, the reason we started this study was exactly what you were bringing up, was how do we stabilize a city to get the value up with more density and address the concerns that we have and we know that a lot of our houses are. If you walk these streets and these blocks, you know there's a lot of need. And so we've got to make sure every piece of property is the value it should be. I'm not saying out of line, but it's got to be a value. And I know we can create more density, we have all kinds of land that we can do more density to, to get more units, both for affordability and for people, market rate. But we have to do something. And this was started before we had our budget issue that we have. So you're right. We've got to start thinking long-term. It's not about us today, but what's going to be forward. Because this strategy, whatever we establish, isn't going to happen overnight anyway. So it's a matter of if we aren't looking ahead, we will get further behind and then we will not be able to support what we need to for our citizens. So I go for, let's go the block approach. Really, it's really kind of like Invest DSM, but probably even bigger. But I like the fact that it's taking, looking at the major quarters, if you look at the, there's a lot of density on the quarter going down into the residential, what we've been talking about all along, about getting even for our transit and everything. So I think we have to do something and I think we have to really be the, look at the vision for where we're going to be in 25 years, not for what is happening right now today. So. So with that, I'll turn it back to the manager, we will, just to let people know, we're reconvening at 4:45 for the presentation, which, um, for our regular meeting, but anything else to add?
So we're, we're, what's the next steps here? I guess, I don't, I, I know he had a last slide, but we didn't, I don't think-
Turning it over.
-thought to him.
So now with this input, we can go back, answer the questions, they're still out there, and actually provide more details, uh, as to the financing, the tools that, uh, that would come together for the full block redevelopment. We would talk with our partners, uh, further, uh, about how their role would fit into each of these strategies. So we will need to come back to you with full details. This is in no way an approval to move forward with this, it is additional research, uh, that will be time-consuming, but we'll get that done for you.
Geograph.
Geographically, the tools, the, how the bonds would work, how the bonds would get people paid.
Long-term value, what it, what it, how, what will solve some of the issues for long-term.
The wear down, you wore us down.
Okay, with that, um, I think we will conclude this work session, thank you for all that attended, and thank you for your input.